It is 6 o'clock. Would you have a motion to start the meeting?
I'll make a motion to start.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So be. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I don't usually do this, but please remain standing. Being that Veterans Day was just a little while ago, just a moment of silence for the veterans. Thank you very much. Okay. We are here today to continue with the Broughton 390 old Route 22 washake variance request. Yes, sir.
Yes, hello. My name is Patrick Canty, C-A-N-T-Y. I'm with Empire Solar Solutions. We are the solar contractors for this job, so I'm just here to present our case. So as some of you may remember, we did come before the board before and you guys wanted us to make a couple of changes just to really nail out the specifics of the plans in terms of where the panels were, where it relates to a lot of important landmarks on their property and next to the property. So the main points, well, I guess, start by summarizing. We plan to install a 22-panel ground mount with REC 410 watt panels. It is located just south of the main residence, and we are requesting a variance of, here I have the exact numbers, requesting a variance of 35 feet from the rear and 11.3 feet from the front property line to, because those setbacks are typically 50 feet and 75 feet respectively. So requesting variance for that. If you look at our updated plans, we marked where the power lines are so that you can see we are a suitable distance away from the power lines that are behind his properties. We also marked it where it is relative to the other home on the separate parcel. If you know, this parcel, it's kind of, there's like a little jagged triangle that kind of cuts into the southern parcel, so we're kind of putting it in between there. And yeah, we're here to answer whatever questions you have and, you know, just kind of work through it.
I have a couple observations. So the key threshold issue that we talked about in September was whether or not this qualified as a ground-mounted solar system.
Yes.
Given the relative size of the system as compared to the principal structure on the lot. And the board might remember that the key issue is that to constitute a ground-mounted solar system, which is allowed in this district, the area of the solar panels must measure less than 50% of the footprint of the primary structure. And the issue we had identified at the last meeting was that the primary structure was identified as 1,152 square feet, and a 577 square foot system was going to be just slightly greater than 50% of that number. They went back, they corrected that number to 1,344 square feet. I also spoke with the code enforcement officer about this. The applicant's letter indicates that there's an entrance way from the garage going to the habitable space of the home. Some of you might have seen that. I think there was a site visit. That wasn't included in the initial calculation. Building inspector confirmed that in my conversation with him. He described it as a mudroom essentially. So in his view, that's part of the size of the principal structure, should be included in a calculation. And with that inclusion, there's no issue with respect to the 50% threshold any longer. That's consistent with the definition of footprint that's in the code when we're looking to define what the footprint of that main structure should be. That's defined to be the area of the ground covered by a structure, including the foundation, and all areas enclosed by the exterior walls and footings and covered by roofing. So basically, if it's within your four walls, it should count towards the size calculation. Couple other observations I have. The rear variance that they're looking for, the solar array is planned to be only 15 feet off of the rear property line. So when they say they're looking for 35-foot variance, that's because the minimum size requirement is 50 feet. So I agree that they need that variance. Board might remember that the solar array is in this odd-shaped triangle. So they've identified that the solar array is going to be 63.7 feet off of that property line, and as such, because there's a front yard setback requirement of 75 feet, they're looking for a variance to make up that, what is it, 11.3 foot difference. But when you look at the definition of front yard, this solar array is actually not proposed to sit in front of the building, the principal structure where it is. It's essentially sitting in the side yard here and protruding no more, actually, the deck on the front of the house and probably some of the front of the house is in front of where the solar array is proposed to be. So I don't think you need that front yard variance because you're not in the front yard. I've talked to John Andrews about this. I've talked to the building inspector about this, and they agree. They don't think that front yard variance is required because we're really just talking about something that's in the side yard with the side yard dimensions applying here. So from my perspective, we should be focusing on that rear yard setback. John Andrews was taking a closer look at everything. He might prepare a review letter before the next meeting because we do have to have a public hearing on this.
Right.
So there might be some additional details that are requested, but I don't see any reason not to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for next month so we can kind of advance this application and focus on the rear yard variance.
Okay. Excuse me. As Rob said, we all had a visit down to the site individually this past week. And is there any comments that anyone needs to make from their visits? Guess not. Okay. Then I guess the next thing is for us to go ahead and schedule the...
Sorry, I just have one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
There was also included in a resubmission, a narrative explaining why the area variance was requested, and addressing each of the four steps that this board will need to address when they ultimately consider the issue in terms of defining what the benefit is to the applicant, defining what the detriment is to the community or to the nearby properties, examining whether or not this relief or the benefit could be obtained by something other than the relief requested, and establishing that the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. This is a general discussion of the project, the benefits and the potential detriments of the project itself. I think it would be helpful for the board if at some point before the public hearing, you focused on the balancing test as applied to that rear variance that you're seeking. Why does it have to be exactly here? What is the detriment of locating it exactly here? What is the benefit of locating it exactly there?
Okay.
As opposed to just considering the overall project and whether or not the project is warranted.
Sure.
Because that will then inform this board's potential findings in determining whether or not the area variance should be granted. That's all I have.
That was a question I had.
Right.
Why the array needed to be that close to the rear property line? Because I believe the array is about 40 feet in width. Is that, I think that's the size we saw.
Yeah, let me see. I have the exact dimensions. If you'd like, I can read those.
39.72.
So when we were originally planning this out, well, I guess the first point would be, we did think we'd need the front yard variance. So we figure, we tried to get it as, like, we tried to reach that front line, property line variance as much as we could. It was 75 feet. Couldn't really get there anyway, so that didn't really matter. But we weren't, we were just trying to balance it as best we could between the two variances so that we could get approved. So that's part one. Part two is, as you can see on the satellite image, there's, his driveway kind of comes down under the house to the south, and we are going to try to do the trench around that. So the positioning of the panels makes it easier for us to dig a trench line to where we connect to the meter, and it doesn't let us go under the driveway. Like, we wouldn't have to rip up his driveway to create access for the trench. So those were a couple of the things that we considered when we were placing it, and we still wanted to keep it obviously more secluded towards the back of the property.
I take it that's going to be facing about a southwest?
Yeah, it's going to be, I believe it's directly south. I think it's, I know it shows on the...
I've seen a south and a southwest.
So let me see, because I know on this, so I think on our, we typically do it directly south. We'd only do it directly, we'd only do it southwest if there was a unique shading from the trees, or if it was to fit a certain variance line.
I had a discussion with Mr. Broughton while he was there that, you know, is that the only place it could be? And we discussed putting it way down on the lower area where it'd get the full sun all day. Like he says, if he does that, he's got to cut down some trees, plus everybody in the neighborhood would be able to see it. So, okay. Very good. Thank you.
But it appears that this array could be moved toward the west and really almost fit within the setbacks of the rear and side yard. And I'm still not sure why that doesn't happen.
You mean get it to, you mean basically just push it all the way to the edge of the original site?
More down the hill.
It starts going downhill that way. What's this?
That's, it's a house.
No, not like that.
It's a driveway. Septics over here.
Septics over here.
Greenfield, tank.
Oh, the tank. Yes.
Yeah, the tanks here.
Okay.
The only proposed thing is to move the whole project here on this property, but then we have to tear all those trees.
Just to summarize, we also have to take into consideration the septic system that they have in the front of the property. And if you look on the survey map, you can see the septic tank is right in front of the house. Again, we don't want to have to dig our trench around that. That's really, it adds a lot more time and money to the project. We really want to just make our lines, trenches as straight and just as simple as possible. So if we have it pushed more towards the back of the property line, we're able to do that.
So what you've indicated, you say septic system, but it looks like it's really the septic tank?
Yeah.
So where's the field?
The fields are in the, like, north, I guess it's northwest of the property, and then on the other parcel, there's another septic field in the front of the property. Would you like me to come up and point it out?
Okay.
It's like going down the driveway, right?
Yeah. It's like parallel with the driveway.
So the septic field, you look at the two properties. For this house, this one, the septic field's here. For this house, the septic field's here.
Okay, that's wrong. So this side is away from...
Yeah, but yeah, the property line is, this is one property here.
No, I know. Yeah, I finally got that. There's no setback requirement for the two par, between, where it breaks the... Is there no setback requirement for the side?
I think that would be, that would be the side setback distance, which is... I don't have the use table in front of me right now.
30 feet.
30 yards, be close to...
30?
Yeah, 30. Yep.
Is that less or more than 30?
They're showing 63.7 now.
That doesn't seem possible. I'm talking about between the two parcels, the line between the two parcels.
The, the, this long line here?
They have it as the front yard setback right now. They're saying, I guess that could be the side. So instead of 75, it could be 30, which would be, be able to move that to the west.
I believe they were explaining that even though, they made the decision to put it 63.7 feet off of that property line, not only because of the perceived front yard setback issue, but also the location of the trenching relative to the driveway?
Yes.
That's correct.
But is, how, how far from the back are they? Are you?
15 feet from the back property line.
Oh, it's only 15, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Perhaps it could be helpful if this, for a follow-up submittal, this map could be marked with the proposed trenching location, as well as where the existing septic fields are, just so the board can see that needle you're attempting to thread.
And you also have the well in there too, correct?
Yes. The well is, it's a little, I guess, east of, it's out of the, like, we'll be able to avoid it, but it's like just east and, like, just northeast of the, where the array is going to go.
Northeast.
But I can, if you want me to get a map...
It's marked on the survey. If, I have a copy here if you guys don't have it in front of you.
Yeah, let me show you. It makes things easier. I'll show you where all these things are. So the setback, like, the advisor said, so the, this is the house. The well is actually right there, that little black mark.
Okay.
So the array, they have it, I thought it was over here, but it's here now.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
So the setback, what the variance we're looking for is right here. This variance, I think, is cleared. I'm not sure, but yeah, we talked about it with Empire, just scrapping this and putting it on this property over here, but then we have to dump out all that. This section has to be cleared about that much. That's a lot of trees coming down. Plus, I don't want, that's going to look nasty anyway. So this is, this is the septic for this.
So basically, instead of being like this?
This is the septic field for this cabin right over here.
This one comes down like that.
And the well. So the line of sight is all clear. There's nothing here. The electric's gone this way. Well, the line goes like this. So the proposed line to the meter would be right here.
Thank you.
There's the two odds, right? And what they did is they took this piece and gave the triangle to go with this piece.
Sure.
What's the relationship of the trench and the solar array? And we saw the trench, I believe.
Oh, that's, that's, that trench you saw is, we're making a blueberry. That's completely separate. That's for land.
Yes. So when we trench, it's basically to run a conduit underground so that we can hook up the solar system to the main service meter.
Right, to the, with your house.
Yeah, basically just to hook it up to the grid, yeah.
But why does, why does the trench come into play when you're locating the array closer to the rear property line?
It's just so that we don't have to dig through or around certain obstacles. Like, if we were to shift it over towards the, which is now a side property line, where, in that triangle, like that, that western property line, we could shift it over, and then if we want to dig our trench straight up to get to the meter, we'd have to take into consideration the septic tank, the driveway, and trees. So those are all things that we'd either have to remove and then repair, or if it was in the case of the trees, we'd have to remove in general. And so we try to avoid as many obstacles as we can. It just streamlines the process, makes it a lot cheaper, and it causes less damage to the property during construction.
But it looks like you could go straight from the house, in the back of the house, to the array?
Yeah, that's why, that's why you put the array there. So we could just do a trench straight there, so you don't have to go around any of the obstacles.
How deep does the trench go, and what actually goes in it?
So it's 18 inches, and it's basically a, call it a conduit, but it's basically just like a metal pipe that holds electrical wires so that the energy can be transferred from the system to the house.
Thank you.
Is there any benefit to, you know, its current location being less visible from the road by pushing it back a little bit further? If you were to push it forward 30 or so feet, it would presumably be more visible from the road as well, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point.
From the lookout point up on the, from the Hillburn.
Yeah, the, the...
With the telescope.
The location that I looked at while I was there, even though I could see there's more beneficial for getting more sun, it's not beneficial for camouflage of the unit because of the fact you've got, DelaBurn Hill, got a clear sight of it.
Me, your town councilman, Paul Winters. So when I went to the site visit there, I spoke with Mr. Broughton, and I looked up at that DelaBurn Hill there because I know that's a big concern for the community. And I asked Mr. Broughton if he would be considered to plant more trees in that area there to shade from DelaBurn Hill, and he did seem agreeable to it. So maybe that's something you guys can discuss with him.
Yeah, there's one, there's that. There's one open space, and there's a junk tree, and I don't like those junk trees anyway. But my wife wants a willow, and those are expansive. And this, that's at one spot, but as far as that overlook, any, you look at the house, you can barely see it because it's black. Now, the back of that side of the panels are black as well. So you're not going to, people go, oh my God, what's that up there? But we would put, my wife wants a willow anyway, and a good place to end. She's been looking, begging for one of those for quite some time. And that's that one spot right where the, you see with the array, you can see there's a little gap there. There's a tree coming up. There's a junk tree.
Behind, behind the array, right?
Yeah, and the rest of them, those other trees are massive. Those are all conkers.
I don't think the view from DelaBurn Hill is that much of a concern because the solar array goes the other way.
It goes the other way, so you won't get the reflect, right?
Any reflective...
But those are things that need to be looked at and considered.
Yeah.
And I know this, across the street is, across the way is Sigel Ridge, and, well, he's got some houses that he has to look at.
Construction side's what I get to look at.
Well, I guess they can let us know if that's a problem next, next meeting.
I'm sure they will.
All right. Any other discussion?
No.
What would be a good, how do we have to do this for a public hearing? I know we've got to, we've got to get it in the paper for a certain amount of time, and then, you know...
I have plenty of time for your December meeting if you want to do it on 16th. I think everybody's going to be around.
Everybody, that's a good question.
Go to the calendars.
Grab the calendars, everybody.
I mean, he's not going to do this until spring anyway, so why don't we wait till after Christmas?
16th, yeah, I'm here.
Me too.
Okay. Any objection to the 16th, people?
The 16th.
16th of December.
Just one question, Rob. As far as getting the information to the county or the borough, I've got to do that as well.
That should happen as soon as possible because they do technically have 30 days.
So what am I submitting? What they have done, or what, am I waiting for anything to work out?
Robert, Sally, I...
Tab is here.
You're submitting everything they've done. If you could just get a letter real quick, stepping through the area variance criteria, and capture all the things we talked about tonight, the next day or two, because that way it can then go to the county, because we have to send the county a complete statement of the entire application.
Yeah.
If that's the last piece that I think will be very helpful for it, we'd like to get it to them in the next two days.
So in that letter, do you want, do I need to explain at all that we originally made, we originally were planning on getting a front property line variance, but now we don't need that for the side, or just leave it out and just talk about the back variance?
I don't think it's necessary because we don't think you need that any longer. If any decisions were made because of that, and that's why things are where they are, you can say that, but...
He said John Andrews is going to have a comment memoir as well, so...
Yeah, I'll call him tomorrow.
Be good, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, I don't think it'll be something, anything terribly comprehensive, but yeah, we'll check in in two days and hopefully be able to get it to the county and have them get a review letter. This is the type of thing that I would suspect that they would find no county-wide impact.
And so one last question. This pack, this like, this packet that we have to be, that has to be submitted to the county, do we just send everything to you guys and then you send it, or we send everything to you? Okay. Perfect.
And I don't think you need anything, any additional copies from them. You just take a copy from what's already been submitted?
Correct.
Okay.
And there are current, in the current letter saying what we're doing.
And if for whatever reason, if for whatever reason we don't hear back from the county by...
We have to, what, we have to put a public hearing notice and a sign out for...
Oh, yeah.
What about surrounding neighbors?
Yeah, and that's the public hearing.
Okay, okay.
So I was saying, if for whatever reason we don't hear back from the county by December 16th, we can still do the public hearing that night. We just wouldn't be able to issue the decision that night.
Okay.
If we do hear back from the county, we have a chance of doing the hearing and issuing a decision, depending on the nature of the comments that are received.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? I don't think so, but...
You have to have a motion for that.
Yes, and I need a motion. That's where, that's where I was going next. Do I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the 16th of December for Mr. Broughton? Do I have a motion?
I motion that we have a public hearing on the 16th of December on this issue.
I'll second it.
I'll third it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I just want to warn everybody, you guys, is bring your microphones, like, close to you like that. And then when people have phones, they're very, they're a lot of things like that.
All right, they're going to hear me.
Something that we would, we had to run a hard line.
Thanks a lot.
And I don't know if I was supposed to sit up there or not, I just sat back here.
No, you don't need to sit up here. You're a liaison, but you're not part of the...
Yeah, I agree with you 100%.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just, you know, with the speaker, with the microphone thing, the people at home, they can't hear you, and they get excited, and then we hear about it.
Okay, we're not finished yet.
Yeah, we're not finished yet. Not by a long way.
Oh, no.
Other matters. The minutes of 9:16:24. Any discussion on those minutes?
I don't, I don't think I was here, so I...
No, you weren't here.
I have no discussion.
9:16, no, I don't even have any.
I read them through. The only thing I saw was one, one word was missing.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And it was something like an "and" or "then" or...
Oh, okay. I'll see if I can find that here.
Okay. That's dreadful, yeah.
I know.
I'm, I'm, I'm critical like that. Okay. Any, any comments on those minutes?
They're here, someone, okay. We got a copy of them, or, I don't know, there's some of them out there. Well, where are they? Nope, I don't have a copy of them.
Yeah, I only printed a couple of copies for the table.
Do you need, are you looking for?
Do you want to keep all this?
Here, you can, I, I was in here.
It was a short meeting, right?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Yeah, on the second page.
Okay.
The, the application still needs to be changed, and it should be "and more documentation provided."
Okay.
I knew I'd seen it somewhere there. Other than that, any objections? Motion due, except the minutes as corrected.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that, I would say a motion to adjourn the meeting would be acceptable.
I second. Oh, do I need to give the original motion?
Somebody does.
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.